Meeting of April 13th to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Protem Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
We'll go on to special orders of the day. The legislative advocacy opposed AB 1217.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Any discussion? You seem like a consent counter. Do you have a motion to move this?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Pass 5-0. We'll go to the Police Department budget overview. Kathy, is that you? Chief, okay.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Murphy, members of the City Council. Like recreation, community development, and public works we're able to present in previous meetings, it's my pleasure to give a presentation of the Police Department with specific emphasis on the personnel and the fiscal resources for the budget. Kathy's gonna help me. First, we're starting with our mission. We are committed to providing the highest degree of professional police service in partnership with the community to ensure Los Alamitos is a safe place to live, visit, and conduct business. This slide is a snapshot of the Part I crimes that were reported in the last calendar year. Part I crimes are those crimes that we are required, as is every law enforcement agency, to report to the FBI annually. And you will see that the majority of our crimes, eighty-six percent of them, are property crimes. Most of those are larcenies or thefts. Just fourteen percent of our crimes were crimes against persons or violent crimes. And we have not had a homicide in our city in over seven years. This next slide represents the trend of Part I crimes over the last several years. And you'll notice that in this last year, we had a forty percent drop in Part I crimes. That drop is very significant. I'd like to say that we came up with some great program. But it's really kind of hard to explain why that happened. It's possible, the year before, crime actually spiked as high as it had been in several years. And in a city our size, where we're not talking about a large amount of numbers to begin with, I think any change can appear dramatic. As we anticipate for the next fiscal year, the 15-16 year, we anticipate an organization with twenty-five full-time sworn personnel and three full-time civilian personnel, along with a part-time personnel of five and a half FTEs, and then adding an additional FTE to go with the anticipated parking meter enforcement.
How does that compare to this year?
The addition of the one full-time equivalent is the change there.
Did we get through most of last year with twenty-two full-time sworn?
Probably about that, yeah. I don't... We've had at least a couple of vacancies through most of the year, yes. And in this current year, we're actually at twenty-four full-time as our full allotment. It will become twenty-five with the reorganization that we'll talk about, you know, with going to the extra, the second captain. We're going to twenty-five instead of twenty-four and one additional nonsworn.
Civilian and everything else is the same?
The... Well, it'd actually be one less civilian because, and one additional full-time, because of the exchange of the captain for the support services manager.
So this year, we have four full-time civilians?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. This pie chart represents the budget that we're proposing. You'll see that eighty percent is personnel. And we're looking at a... We're going to ask for a 5.8 percent increase over last year. We're gonna come in this year approximately $200,000 under budget due to salary savings. And in the upcoming slides, we'll talk about the reasons for the increase. This slide represents the org chart. Our organization is divided into two divisions, patrol and support services. And then, under those two divisions, we have several subdivisions that we will talk about in the upcoming slides. Can you go back one more time? And you also notice that the... This organization chart will show the additional captain instead of the support services manager that has managed the support services division. Now, we're gonna look at our budget by programs or those subdivisions I talked about. And this first slide shows that breaks down all of those different programs. And you'll see that patrol represents the majority, almost half, of the overall budget. First up is administration. We are asking for a 26 percent increase over the current budget. And that is primarily due to purse costs, the captain's position, vacation payouts due to anticipated retirements, an additional captain's car, and the added capital replacement charges. The administration is made up of one chief, proposed two captains, and a department secretary. And under the maintenance and operations capital replacement are those additional charges for equipment and facilities that are being added to the budget. And this represents activity within administration. Just a couple points that I'll mention are department training. Our personnel, over the course of the last year, have attended 102 training courses. You'll see that animal control and information technology. We have in here our... As it stands now, Kathy oversees those. And our department secretary handles the clerical support for cable commission. And also, something I'll notice there is citizen complaints. We are required by law to investigate all citizen complaints. The number there says that we had one over the course of the year. I actually need to correct that. We had four complaints that were filed, but of those four, only one of them resulted in any kind of sustained violation of policy. And even that one, that violation of the policy was not based on the actual complaint, but something that we discovered through the course of our investigation.
Could I have a... Ask a question on the increased cost in maintenance operations? The... When we agreed to the new captain, we were told it would be an additional eighty-eight percent. Was that eighty-eight percent... I'm sorry, eighty-eight thousand. Was that salary and purs and the car and all other expenses?
It was. And was it even eighty-eight? I thought it was seventy-five.
But that includes everything?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Going next into our patrol. As I mentioned before, patrol represents forty-seven percent of the budget. We're asking for a 1.8 percent increase over the current budget. That's due to purse costs, cost of living that was negotiated, health insurance increase, and some step increases due to increase in tenure from our current personnel.
Could you give us an idea of how many people are on the street at any one time?
That's my next slide. I don't know if I... I plan to answer that question. I don't know if it's actually in this slide. But patrol is made up of sixteen sworn personnel. You see the breakdown up there. Four sergeants, four corporals, four officers. We typically field three to four patrol units at a time. Three at a minimum, four is ideal. And in addition to that, we might have a motor officer during the day that's working traffic. So typically, out in the field is somewhere between three and four. Anyways, out of patrol, you see that also includes our reserve officers, homeless liaison, which is an ancillary assignment one of our officers is assigned to. We have officers assigned to our SWAT team, which is ancillary. And all of those come out of our patrol budget.
Reserve officers, we still have two?
We have two currently. And right now, neither one of them are working out in the field. They do do some things for us in addition to their traffic assignment, which I'll talk about in a future slide.
Are they... At one time, we were allocated, I think, for six?
Probably at six. I mean, going back several years, at one time, we were allocated for ten.
Okay.
It has decreased over the years, yes.
In lieu of adding full-time sworn?
No. No. They've never been in lieu of full-time sworn. They've always supplemented our sworn. Okay.
Hey, Chief.
Yes.
The nonsworn, are those the guys that work the red flag camera picture evaluation?
They are reserve officers. They are sworn officers, but reserve officers. And they'll come up in our traffic slide.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Some activities to highlight related to patrol. I won't read through them all, but I'll mention that last year, we made 370 arrests. We responded to 8,600 calls for service. We've maintained response times to emergency calls at less than three minutes. I mentioned SWAT. We do participate in a regional SWAT team. There's a significant amount of training involved. And over the course of the year, we had two incidents that we responded, that we activated the SWAT team for. None of those were in our city. We've documented six uses of force. Each one is... Goes through an administrative review policy to determine whether they are within our policy. Next, we'll go into investigations. Investigations represents 12 percent of our budget. We're looking at a 1 percent increase due to purs, cost of living, and wireless access for tablets. Our detective bureau is made up of four sworn officers or detectives plus one part-time police aide that is... That works property and evidence. Also, within those four, we have our corporal who is part of that division. However, that corporal spends the majority of his time with personnel and training, recruitment, and disaster preparedness, but we count that in our investigations budget. Some activities to highlight from investigations is our detectives investigated 331 cases last year. Of those 331, they brought 168 to conclusion with 53 arrests. We've had... They also are responsible for monitoring our... We call it the post-release community supervision. Those are the folks that are under supervision, that replaced state parole, that the county actually has the responsibility for, but we monitor them closely as well. And twenty-seven registrants, sex, arson, and narcotic registrants in the city. There's a... All of our training activity is subject to audit by peace officer standards and training, and they conduct a very extensive, thorough audit annually. And our training corporal works with post through that process, and we do conduct at least one audit a year.
What are the community presentations? What types of things are those?
The community presentations, I know our detectives were involved with Southland Credit Union. They worked with them and gave them some crime prevention information. You know what the other ones were? While Kathy's looking at it, I'll move on to... Okay. A safety presentation for a business in town.
Drug take-back event, ID theft presentation, and one over at...
Southland?
Southland.
Okay. Also, our corporal that's assigned to investigations is very involved with the recruitment and background process, doing extensive pre-employment backgrounds for 10 positions that we fill, as well as some other backgrounds related to massage establishment, secondhand dealers that apply, and other background processes for city positions. Looking at records, records represents 3 percent of our budget. It's made up of two full-time record specialists, a part-time administrative intern, and a part-time police aide. We're looking at a 12 percent increase in their budget as a result of purs increases and step increases, as the two full-time record specialists have increased their tenure with the city.
These are not part of the POA negotiations. This is part of the...
They're represented by the City Employees Association. Some highlights from the records division. They process more than 12,000 records per year. They are also responsible for the counter service, you know, handling all of the activity that comes to our front counter during business hours. They prepare cases for court and process evidence. Communications technology accounts for 11 percent of our budget. This includes Westcom, our CAT RMS through West Covina, the 800 megahertz radio backbone and repair, the civic center phone bills, and some contractual services. Let me go back. There, we're looking at a 2 percent decrease, primarily due to savings from going from the T1 line for data to the Internet. Looking at communications technology, I just mentioned leaving that T1 line's gonna save us 80, $100 a year. We have the CAT RMS replacement project, which is going on right now. And as far as the 800 megahertz, one particular highlight is that we've secured quotes for the purchase of radios that discounted priced at 50 percent. Community outreach is... Represents 0.1 percent of our overall budget. We don't have any personnel that are specifically dedicated to community outreach. It's all done through ancillary assignments. Our budget's very small. It's only $650. And any overtime is very limited and pretty negligible.
Excuse me, Chief. Does the SRO kind of do community outreach for us by being in touch with students on a daily basis?
I would say everything we do is... There's a community outreach component to it, sure. And there's some activity based on our community outreach efforts. Email blasts, we did over 121. We've been involved in what we counted as 18 community events or meetings. And we... Our personnel are... Have had a significant involvement through our local organizations in our city. We counted eight of those organizations that we've had some kind of involvement or activity with. Youth services, 3 percent of our budget. This is primarily our school resource officer. We're not looking at an increase or a decrease in the next budget. There's... There are some increased cost of living and purse costs. However, they're offset by some decreases in costs, because we've eliminated some startup costs from the first year that we had this program. As you know, we have a cost-sharing partnership with the Los Alamitos Unified School District and the city of Seal Beach, where we pay 50 percent and they each pay 25 percent. Looking at some activity from our school resource officer, you'll see that he's had a very productive year. He's been very busy. We've counted 111 student education presentations, four parent education presentations, more than 70 drug evaluations with the officer using his drug recognition expertise, been involved in one active shooter exercise. He's conducted school safety assessments at all of the schools in the district. He's made several faculty presentations, as well as been involved in, you know, quite a few dozens of criminal investigations. Traffic represents 8 percent of our budget. We are looking at a 17 and a half increase over the current budget. That is a result of us, this year, budgeting for the full year's cost of our crossing guards, as opposed to the half year that we put in there in the current year. The added parking meter enforcement, as well as the purs and COLA increases, and purchasing some new accident diagramming software for about $1,800.
Why are we doing full-time crossing guard when we've set a precedent?
Your question was, why are we doing...
Why are we going back to full...
The full year's worth?
Of the crossing guards when we set a precedent this year of doing half, help close the budget.
Because my understanding is that we're gonna be responsible to cover that for the full year.
What happened to the arrangements with the school district?
I mean, we're funding it. Right now, in the proposed budget for 15-16, it's funded at 100 percent. It was funded last year, and it was considered as a budget gap closure measure in 14-15. Half of that this year, in 15-16, we haven't considered it as a budget gap closure measure at this point. So it's 100 percent funded in 15-16 in the proposed budget.
Has it been resolved for this year?
They have not. There is no half-funding from the crossing guards from the school district at this point.
But we haven't agreed to pay anymore. We agreed to pay half last year, and we haven't changed that at all.
No, we're still just saying it's providing crossing guards at all the schools in Los Alamitos. That's what's budgeted.
So without taking this one item, there were a number of items that were budget closure items that we voted on and approved, several of which still haven't been implemented. So I guess my question is, what I'm hearing coming forward is, there's a budget gap still going into next year. Why are we allowing this to occur from things we agreed upon last year that's not being done?
We talked... We met with the Budget Standing Committee week before last in terms of updating, and we provided an update in the weekly gap closure and where we are right now. As we go through the budget process, it's an evolving process, and we will continue to update the Standing Committee and the City Council. At this point, the budget gap closure measures that we have put in place and that we're continuing to look at are closing that gap significantly, and we're in good shape right now at this point in closing that gap. We don't have that as one of the gap closure measures on the table right now.
So in other words, we tried it, and it didn't meet the muster with the school districts, so we're not doing it?
We're not including it right now.
I'm talking about this year.
This year, the fiscal year's not over yet. At least at the working group, there was a consideration at the working group meeting that the school district would bring an item forward to consider funding half of that at a future school board meeting. This fiscal year ends June 30th. Between now and June 30th will determine if that action will take place.
Being told one thing and finding out different leaves credibility issue from my standpoint. Whether it's a school thing or whether it's any of the other projects we're on, looking at gap closures from the standpoint of this year, I almost have to say they'll be meaningless because we've not been able to do anything this year. I thought it was very clear with the school district. They've come back on negotiations and wanting to do different things. We've not closed that yet, is what you're telling me. And we have two months left to do that.
Well, the gap, in terms of where we are this fiscal year for 14-15, we are in good financial shape in terms of increased revenues and reducing expenditures on the budget savings part. We will give that update as we continue to go through this process as well. We've updated the Budget Standing Committee, and we'll continue to update at the first budget meeting scheduled for May 4th at this point.
Okay. Okay. Looking at traffic... Our traffic division is... Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry. I was waiting for Councilmember Gross to finish. Can I ask you a couple questions? Does it follow the...
Absolutely.
The crossing guard issue, I would have to agree with Dean. I don't feel that we, as a policy, set the way, you know, we better did if we were going to do that. I would just be curious from the... You know, this is the right meeting to actually get a briefing from a working group that actually deals with the school. I've kind of heard indirectly with one of the school board members that in principle, they agree with the amount that they're trying to get to that amount through different means. Is there any more specifics that you could provide us? And I did hear, Chief, on the council side, that we can get an idea. Because I think where... If you just listened to us, what Dean heard, what, yeah, we got direction, it didn't happen, and we just moved on and forgot that we posted on something. And I think that's where you get reaction from Dean. I just would like to have the full story of where we think we're gonna keep that money down. then.
Mayor Protem Edgar, at the last stand, not standing, yes, Standing Committee of the working group for, between the school district and the city, there was discussion again about the sharing of the costs for the crossing guards for this fiscal year. There had been ideas exchanged between myself and the superintendent in terms of ways to come up with half of those costs. And at the last working group meeting, the discussion came forward from the superintendent and those that were at the working group meeting on the school district side to take an item forward to the school district board for consideration to pay for half of the crossing guards. And that was what was in the last working group meeting.
So that's a question, and maybe, again, I feel it's appropriate that the topic's discussion, you know, with all the council members is, do we as the council care where the category of that cost comes from, or are we set that crossing guard? Because I think we need to get the steering or the working groups some direction. Because what I'm hearing is that there's a little bit of an impasse that we, you know, they want to take it from somewhere else, we want to have it here. And that's what I guess I'm specifically trying to get to, is if there are any more policy direction required, but they extended council and where we can get that money? Do we care if the crossing guard, as long as we get, you know, that conception? And I don't have an opinion.
So, hey, Mayor Protem Edgar, so this is Warren Kusumoto. So at the last Standing Committee between our ad hoc and the school board, it was brought up again as the crossing guard issue. And I reiterated to Board Member Dave Warrior about, it was the decision of the council last year to, at first, eliminate the crossing guard as a cost, a gap closure, budget closure matter, and we fought to get half of it back. And without really, you know, expecting the other half to be covered by anybody, I think was just kind of up, you know, in the air. So where Councilmember Gross is coming from, I agree with him. It was, you know, half the year was going to be covered and then kind of gave the school board a chance to figure out where they wanted to go. So I think we come here today and find out, you know, and I know what happened at the last meeting with Superintendent Crop. She was going to bring to her board about funding the other half, is what I thought, but I don't know, is that your?
My interpretation of it, we were talking at that meeting about funding it for 1516, that 1415 had already been decided. And this was, what are we going to do for next year? And they brought up the history about, we weren't, as a gap closure last year, we weren't going to fund any of it. And then we decided to do the 50-50 split, and how are we going to do that moving forward? And that's when Superintendent Crop said.
And just to kind of correct things, I didn't say, and I told the ad hoc from the school board, is that we weren't offering 50-50. We just said we wanted, we were just going to cover half and then, you know, give them time to figure how we're going to, you know, how they might address getting crossing guards for the second half of the year. That's kind of where we left it.
But am I correct in assuming, I was assuming that we were talking about 1516?
I was assuming the other way.
Yeah, I think we were still talking about 1415, because we had gone back to coming up with ways that, a palatable solution on their end where they could fund half the cost in this fiscal year of the crossing guards, which is $30,000.
And that was a burden on my part.
And so she had indicated, rather than going back and forth and trying to come up with 30,000 from multiple pots, just taking an item to the school board to consider funding half of it for this fiscal year. And that hasn't taken place yet at this point, in terms of putting an item on the school board agenda for funding half of the cost.
And I know you and I had had a conversation too about possibly reaching out as a gap closing to St. Hedwig for that crossing guard on Los Allen, Orangewood. Because the students, the residents that would, that live in that area wouldn't be using that crosswalk, so looking at utilization and how much it's used and by who, and at least reaching out to them and provide, you know, we provide a service, would they be interested in any kind of, you know, cost-sharing type thing? Because I don't know if anybody from the Highlands moving over to Rossmore Elementary would be using that crossing guard. I think that's too far. Okay, well that was, thank you for clearing that up.
So my concern is, we determined a policy on a number of items, this was one of them. The question regarding communications with the school district, and improving those communications has been met with, the school district continues to do what they want to do and ignore our rules and regulations. They've done that now again with the bus yard. And they're bringing buses into residential neighborhood at Oak Middle School. And I've had calls from a couple residents over at the mobile park over there complaining about fumes, noise, and I just explained it's temporary because they're redoing their park. You know, that's an impact to us. And if we're not communicating with the school board or the school district, if the school district says we're taking this item to our board for action, then I think it's behoven on us to hold them accountable for that. And to find out when they're taking it, and do they need any further backup or support from us regarding it. What I'm hearing from the city manager is, well, revenues have come in a little bit better than we expected, and we don't need it as much as we did when we started this off and put that on the table. To me, that's the wrong way to go on this. Otherwise, when we make projections for 1516 and say we need to come up with 325,000, it almost seems like, well, let's not worry about it. Let's see how the year goes, and if it continues to improve, we won't need it.
And Councilmember Gross, I wasn't, I wasn't indicating to put it off. I was just giving a snapshot of where we are at this point in time. It's up to the council, I mean, this is an appropriate time, as Mayor Protem Edgar mentions to, for the council to discuss continuing on to require or request that the school district pay half the cost of the crossing guards for this fiscal year. And we still, that was what was discussed at the last working group meeting, and we still can go back and ask the superintendent to clarify when that item is going to be placed on a future school board agenda.
So again, my understanding is, we took this action, we're not being asked by the city staff at this particular point to modify that action. So if you're coming back to the council now saying, we don't need it, we can modify that, we don't need to put the press on, that's, I guess, an action that the council can decide on. But I don't see that there's been a change. In fact, I was somewhat perplexed when half a year went through and we still got crossing guards out there, and I'm working under the assumption school district's paying for it, and that they had agreed on it. And apparently, they haven't agreed on anything, they haven't taken action, and in two months, their year is done, and so we're going to be sitting with an IOU? And we're not even talking about doing the same thing next year? I'm concerned. I think we're given wrong messages. I think we're giving messages that are inaccurate. If we fully believe we needed that funding to balance the budget, we needed the funding for the other items to balance the budget, then we should have been proceeding in that direction. And I don't think that's what's happening.
Can I ask you, we, we had 60,000 originally budgeted for the crossing guard, right?
Yes.
And then we, we agreed as a board that we would do 30. What have we paid this year, the year that's about to come to an end?
We would, I mean, we funded it completely 100 percent for this fiscal year. So we get to the end of the year, it'll be $60,000. If the school board doesn't pay half, it would be $60,000. The request is still open for them to reimburse us for that $30,000.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that was our intent, to ever go above 30. And I don't hear, I don't think it's the intent now to budget the full cost for next year. I was still under the impression we were at half and we're going to stay at half.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I think there's two things though. There's the principle that we set a policy and we expect it to be done, and that's the end point. But, you know, I would obviously say, where we're trying to establish a better relationship with the school district, I mean, if we honestly don't care to snap our stomach to fight for this, is this something that we still have conviction to fight for with a lot of different other areas that are in play right now? And so, I'm not backing away from it. I agree with the first part, which is principle, but the second one is, you know, we've had some discussions in the council meetings in the past about trying to build a better relationship and open communication. And that's why I really am looking at the steering group, the working committee, the sets of school districts, do we still continue to push this because it doesn't appear it's going super well? And a year has passed, and, you know, it would be just a bad assumption if we continue another year and really don't make any more progress on it. So I guess the question is, do we, do we still have the conviction to pursue this and separate that from the city staff needs to execute on what the policies are that we decide? And I guess for this discussion, I'm focused on, do we still want to pursue this? It's just an inflection point.
Warren?
So to address Troy's question, so Troy, what I've tried to consistently communicate to the school board ad hoc is that, and I guess I'll look to the council here, is the message that we want to share in the cost, or I thought the message really was, we're not interested in providing the service. And that's, I thought, where we lifted off last year during the budgeting cycle and then the gap closure. And then we fought, you know, some of us fought to get half of it funded to at least get that question a little runway to get fully answered. So, and I try to communicate to Boyer, to that today, Boyer clearly, is that we weren't looking for half. We were just saying, you know, let's figure out who's going to cover what. And I think, you know, the pushback from Superintendent Crop was that, well, they don't want to be in the business of providing the safety service, but, you know, point of, you know, point of interest is the City of Santa Ana does, and they had to cut their crossing guards as a budget saving measure as well. So it kind of varies from school district to school district. So it becomes kind of a question for them because they've got the two other jurisdictions. They have Rossmore and they also have Seal Beach. And they provide crossing, or how they get their crossing guard services provided there is different. So I think we're kind of pushing them or causing them to think of it in a different term, and the easy way out for them is to offer a half. But it was clear to me at the budgeting session last year, we weren't really interested in half. I think we were looking at trying to save this cost with all of its attendant expenses, the PERS and all the other fringe benefits that employees get. So I think for the council here is what we really want to do. And I've communicated that, you know, no position in terms of, we're looking for half the money. And I know that that was something discussed between Brett and Sherry Crop, but I did not communicate that information to our counterparts on the, on the Standing Committee. So to the council here, yeah.
Thank you, Warren. That's exactly, I appreciate that. I think you captured it perfectly.
So I think, with respect to this one, I think if I understand it, Chief, and this is just a budget item and it's subject to everything else as we go through the process and approach June, and that whole getting the books balanced out, so that'll be one of those things. And I think looking at back retrospectively, I think it'll be up to Brett and discussions with Superintendent Crop, and then us during the ad hoc or the Standing Committee, to see what they're willing and able to do. I think there is an understanding that we covered only half. And I think they're, they'd be, you know, honorable and fair to look at that and try and make this whole in that regard. And then I think the go-forward part is, what do we really want to do for the 1516 year, so? But, and I agree with Councilmember Gross, so I think we got this far, you know, far too late. We should have been doing this in the fall. And I'll take my responsibility for not bringing this up as part of the ad hoc during those
So we will continue to go after the other half this year and into next fiscal year, and we can, depending on what the consensus of the council, we can budget full cost or half cost of crossing guard on into the future as well.
Or potentially no cost, or yeah, zero cost.
Well, Brett, I think if I, if I agree that we'll continue to pursue the half, we'll keep the pressure on you and staff to continue to do it, right?
Yes, that's right.
Should I continue? Okay. Continuing on with our traffic bureau, the personnel that are committed to our traffic program, we have a full-time officer who's assigned to a motorcycle. We have the full-time equivalent of .58 for photo enforcement. These are our reserve officers who have a special job classification as photo enforcement officer. The full-time equivalent of about three-quarters for a park, for a police aide assigned to parking, under the assumption of a full year's of crossing guard service, it's 2.68 FTEs. We have the, our STAR team, the Serious Traffic Accident Response Team, that's a, that's done on an ancillary basis that a few of our officers are on. It's a, it's a shared regional team that involves three of our neighbors. And on the MNO side of significance is our Red Flex contract, which is over $165,000 annually.
Chief, before you move on, on the full-time meter enforcement person, what would the dollar number be for that?
30,000.
30,000.
It's actually part-time, it's one full-time equivalent.
Yes, okay.
So it's part-time, two part-time people.
Okay. So 30,000, and Brett, just without the whole history, when are we expecting the parking meters to be operational?
We are, we're going to City Council on, next week, on April 20th, with the scope of services for the consideration of issuing the RFP. Included in that is the, the request for consultants to have this operational by August 1st. So we have modified the budget and taken one quarter of revenue out for 1516 from a conservative standpoint, but we're still pushing to try to have it up and running by August 1st if all goes well. I mean, if the council approves the RFP and we get it out the door, August 1st is the target date.
So we're only looking to save about $7,500 during the course of the year?
On the expenditure side, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Didn't mean to slow you down, Chief.
As far as activity in traffic, last year, we wrote 1,800 citations for moving violations, 2,700 parking citations, a red light camera enforcement program, wrote over 5,000 citations, investigated 66 injury accidents, 90 non-injury accidents. The STAR team that I mentioned had five callouts in the four cities. One of those was in Los Alamos. Those are for the very serious or fatal traffic accidents. And we were involved in three DUI checkpoint resaturation patrols, which were part of an Office of Traffic Safety grant. Emergency preparedness represents 1 percent of our budget. We're looking at a 30 percent increase, which might sound like a lot, but it's, our personnel costs associated with emergency preparedness are very minimal as they are charged to emergency preparedness, because a lot of that comes from the corporal that I mentioned who does it on an ancillary basis, the one that's assigned to investigations. And our support services manager also is involved in emergency preparation.
So the increase you're saying is overtime?
It's overtime.
But it's an ancillary service?
It's, the overtime is associated with, it's, I'm going to find the amount of overtime. Yeah, it's about $1,700 that has to do with our CERT training. Previously, we've had, one of our sworn officers has been involved in the CERT training. It's a 24-hour course. We anticipate having one a year, and that has been paid, the personnel costs have been paid through a community college. That community college does not offer the training anymore, so we need to bear the personnel cost. So it's 24 hours of overtime for an officer to be involved in that, in that 24-hour training course.
And that's one class a year?
Yeah.
And how many people from Los Alamos are in that one class a year?
This, last year, we had three. The year before that, we had nine. We've had 72 total so far.
This is a program that, for all intents and purposes, is run by Seal Beach, and Los Alamos, Westminster, La Palma, and Cypress participate with it. I would be interested to know what their costs are in relationship in their numbers of students. I've been doing some stuff with Long Beach. Long Beach is teaching a class every month, and it's run through the fire department, not the police department. And it's interesting, the volume, and they have a long waiting list of people that take classes. So I'm just, you know, when we say that we're part of CERT, the majority of the CERT stuff that seems to occur is Seal Beach-based. And I think it's a little deceptive. The other question would be is, if there's a 24-hour class, which is what the class is, does that mean that our officer is involved in it for all 24 hours?
Yes, yes.
And who else is involved in teaching it? There's that many components from each city that participate in each class?
There are, yes.
I'd still be interested to know what costs are for Cypress, La Palma, Warner Park, Westminster.
Okay, we'll try to find that out for you.
Thank you.
And back to our, our budget for emergency preparedness, the majority of the, of that is for our, our shared mobile command posts. For us, we have a, a shared cost of $4,800 annually. And this slide highlights some activities. One alert OC citywide test. We had one earthquake evacuation drill and EOC activation exercise. The revision of our emergency operations plan. One CERT certification presentation. Countywide RACI's drill and a, and a RACI's field day. This slide is a, is a snapshot of our overtime. We, we have about $352,000 of overtime, and often we're asked to explain why we have the overtime that we do. And so we've, we've broken down the reasons for our staff needing to, to work overtime. And you'll see that most of it, 72% of it, is a result of short staffing. That's when we have shifts that need to be filled. Like I explained, we have a, we put a minimum of three officers out in the field at a time. If somebody's off for a variety of reasons, vacation, they're sick, you know, we, when we have vacancies, which has been the majority of it recently, we have to bring somebody in for overtime, and that represents 72% of the time. The other times are pretty limited. You'll see, 6% of the time, our officers have to hold over because the activity in the field that's, that's pending, you know, they're still, they're still involved in working it and unable to clock out and go home, and their shift would have ended.
So, Chief, I have a question. So on that 352,000, what's the full-time equivalent heads in terms of labor hours that represent? So if you don't have the answer, could you just kind of, maybe it's a few, I just get it to us?
Sure.
I'm just kind of curious. Because, you know, on an earlier slide, you said you had, I think to the mayor's question, 22, the equivalent of 22 officers, right? Even though you wanted 25. So, that's, is that three heads roughly?
I would say two.
Okay, so-
Maybe two plus?
Okay.
Two plus.
All right. So that's where you're making up your short three heads, right there.
Right. But, but a lot of the time is, it's not anticipated time, so it's not like we can just go hire two people and plug them in.
No, 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 I understand.
Right.
Yeah, so, just, I'm curious. So it's less than three heads, so-
Yeah.
That's a good answer.
Right.
So, to boil it down, it's, it looks like it's actually a little cheaper to have the overtime rather than the full staffing, and it has been.
Okay, sure.
I'm just looking at the numbers. I don't, I know there's a lot of other-
Sure, there's-
Considerations.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's a burden on staff as well.
Where there are people. Okay, please continue.
I will move on to revenue. I don't think I need to go through each one, but I'll highlight that the traffic fines represent citations, traffic enforcement citations that our officers are writing, as well as the red light camera. And, like I said, I don't, I don't, there's the activity.
The, the traffic fines, if I remember the red light numbers, almost is 90% of that? Is that? Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Are the red lights going away in 2016? Was there something?
There are some variables, but no, that doesn't necessarily mean they're going away. But there are some, some things that might need to be considered based on some potential legislation.
All right, thank you.
Looking at our special police funds, we have the police equipment fund that includes a component for our 800 megahertz upgrade replacement. We are in the process of evaluating our CAD RMS system. We might need to come in and ask for an allocation for next year, but we're really not sure when that is going to be needed. It might be more likely the year after. We've got the Office of Traffic Safety Fund, the Asset Forfeiture Fund, and, and nothing anticipated in, in next year's budget from those.
Could you redeem touch on Westcom? Or are we going to, are they going to come up with something this year? Or is that getting pushed back into the future a little bit more?
You're talking about for the CAD RMS?
And, and the 800.
Well, let's, one at a time. The CAD RMS, do you want to, I mean, I-
Yeah, and Cassie can, also, and Jason, we've been, we've been working on analyzing both pieces together, but the 800 megahertz is the fire system, which is going to happen, it's happening in phases over three years. We've funded, we have an internal service fund that the council approved as last year's part of the fund balance policy, 700,000. That 700,000 is, is supposed to cover both 800 megahertz and the CAD RMS system. The CAD RMS system and analysis has been somewhat delayed. I mean, we're reviewing it at the city manager level, at the police chief level, at all different levels with the general manager, in terms of if and when that's going to happen, and we don't know what those costs are going to be. It's really, Cassie is the closest to that in terms of estimating those costs, but those are much higher than what was originally anticipated at 400,000. So, the total amount, if it's 400,000, will exceed the 700. And so Jason and Cassie have been working together on a, on a plan, seeing if there's room for capitalizing those, financing either the 800 megahertz or the CAD RMS system, depending on what those total costs end up being.
Okay.
But that's been pushed out. I mean, I think 16, 17 is a logical placeholder right now for the, for the CAD RMS. Cassie, anything else you have?
That's fine. Thank you.
On the asset forfeiture, several years ago, we participated in a drug task force, and we got some, some money at that point. I listened to a presentation a week ago from DEA, and apparently when they seize property, when they seize property and cash, they keep 20%, 80% goes back to the task force that's helping them. Are we looking to actively get involved in something like that in the future? Or is it dependent on whether there's that type of activity occurring within our jurisdiction and boundaries?
We've been involved in task force operations like that. It's been many years. You know, 20 years ago, we had an officer assigned to a, you know, full-time to a regional narcotics task force. And then most recently, you know, just a few years back, we assigned our school resource officer. We had an opportunity to commit that position over the summer months. We don't have any, we, we haven't looked into being actively involved in other task force that would require us to create another position. You know, that's, that's certainly something that we can do, but we, but we haven't explored that.
Just, just from the DEA standpoint, there's hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, that's involved with those things. And it seems like it's a revenue source much like a grant or anything else, that we ought to be looking at and determining our return value. Because other departments are doing it. And, and I don't know whether it's jurisdictional based or not. They talked specifically about a program that was Beverly Hills, which is not our area at all, but the return revenue was-
The returns are, the returns are volatile. I mean, they, they, they can be. There is risk involved. I mean, I, I can talk about my history from 20 years ago, when I was in a program where, when we first got into it, it, it was generating revenue that was above our personnel costs. After we were in it for a little while, it turned out that it was costing us money. Yeah, some, some of the agencies that are involved in these are, are, are coming out ahead. Others aren't. There, there really are no guarantees. So that's, that's, you know, something we would have to consider.
It is also restricted money. It's a special revenue fund that we have to put it in if we receive it, so that's restricted in terms of how we have to pay for it.
Right.
And typically, if you add, you have to add an officer to be assigned to the task force, that can be paid at least partially out of the asset forfeiture money and not general fund, but the money that comes back, doesn't come back to the general fund. So it's not, it's not something that's a gap closure, but it is something that can provide technology and other equipment paid for out of asset forfeiture.
And we can go ahead to the next slide. Internal service funds, those are our garage funds related to the 15 vehicles we have in the police department, as well as the technology fund of $38,000 or 0.6% of our police budget for our IT. And I think that is it. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, Chief, just one question on, back in one of the slides about the school resource officer doing safety assessments at all schools. So that's something, it's on slide 37. So, he went to actually all the schools in LAUSD?
He, along with representation from the, from the school district, yes. We, we did have him involved to, to some extent with the other schools as well.
Okay, that's interesting. Is there a way to get a report from that? Did you get a report from Officer Brandt on that?
We can, we can get something.
Yeah, maybe just presented to council. I think, it's just, it's a good news thing, right? I think so. We just get that feedback, that'd be great.
Okay. And like, like I said, it was, it was the, it was the school's assessment, but our officer played a role in it.
Yeah, and then the school's paying a part of that, so I can understand them, you know, wanting and needing that. And that's a, that's a good thing. I think it's all good, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
You know, we've had a surprising number of people watch these, much to my surprise, but could you take a moment to discuss, like a little public service about street closures that are coming up with a new event at the high school?
Sure. We are one of the many partners with the Los Alamos Youth Center to present the Every 15 Minutes program, which is a DUI awareness program that's presented at Los Alamos High School every other year. It's done every other year, but focused on two ways, so we cover all the students over the course of two years. It's, it's, the focus is on the junior and senior classes. And it's a very impactful program that involves a, part of the program involves a recon, a mock accident scene, a fatal accident, that we, in years past, have done it on the campus of the high school. But really, the, this program is, it's, it's really all about the realism that really makes the impact. So this year, we're actually, we're going to do it on the street. We're going to do it on Los Alamos Boulevard, right, just adjacent to the school. It's this Thursday. So we're going, we're going to close the northbound lanes of Los Alamos Boulevard from Cerritos for a couple of hours, I think starting at 10:30 on Thursday morning. We're actually going to land a helicopter as, as part of the, the mock scene. Briefly, a helicopter will, will land to pick up a patient. So that's this Thursday. And then the, the program goes over the course of two days, and it, it, it ends with a, an assembly that's done on the campus.
Okay, thank you. So streets will be closed Thursday for about two hours from-
Northbound Los Alamos Boulevard from Cerritos will be closed from about 10:30 to 1 o'clock on Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
We've got other street work going that you might want to talk about, because apparently I had a resident call me regarding the closure on Florista, east of the Boulevard, and I guess around the post office. You can't get out because of whatever work the school district is doing on Brigham and Way, totally blocked. And the entrance that you go in is the exit that you have to go out, and it's not painted or paved that way. And I guess that's causing some issues. And I believe it's Edison that's finishing up some of their work that they're doing, repaving in some areas as well.
Yeah, there's two, there's two public utility projects going on, and then the school district project. The two public utility projects are a road closure on April, I'm sorry, that one we already have. The, the gas company is finishing up their upgrades to their facilities in Cherry, Catalina, and Catella. So they're required to come back and pave our roads to our satisfaction. They'll be doing that tonight and tomorrow night. The other project that you've mentioned is the Southern California Edison putting in a new vault at Florista and Los Alamos Boulevard. They'll be doing that construction for about three weeks, and that is a construction that's not at nighttime. It is from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the afternoon. So you'll have intermittent closures and detouries there as well while they dig and place their new vault in the underground below the street. And then the other one is the school district's blockage of the, of the post office, and we don't have the details on that construction.
So because they exempted themselves from ordinances and rules, they don't have to inform us?
I don't know that to be the case, if that's why they haven't done so. Well, you know, I, I actually didn't know about the construction there until you mentioned it. So I'm not sure the details of it.
They were over there earlier, and it's a real mess.
Yeah. We'll look into it and be able to get back to it and post some information that we have available. Wendy's been trying to put it on Facebook for us. So she's got one post already up, and she's got one more to go, and then we'll try to get the information out to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
First, we'll talk about police budget. Can I just, in my closing comments, just wanted to talk about a couple things I'm hearing from the mayor?
Please do.
First of all, Chief, thank you very much. I really appreciate the, the update and the overview. There are a couple things that I think there are, are missing in here is the narrative that probably belongs on the, on the top of it, which is, you know, this whole two slides, the most important slide out of this entire presentation is slide seven and 46. And slide seven is the budget overview, and I think it's one that when a community looks at it, they, they see, you know, the biggest number there is, you know, it looks like a 9.8% increase year-on-year, depending on, you know, where- eight percent increase year-on-year, depending on, you know, where you end up. And I think Chief did a really good job of explaining why that increase is there, but I think it's important that council reiterates this in summary to the community, which is the main progress of this was, you know, us trying to evaluate toward an unexpected significant increase in retirement cost. That's one part of it. And probably most importantly, respect to kind of which was, you know, that we really had to evaluate, reorganize the police department to accommodate our substantial financial specifically within the captain's department services area, knowing that we've got a couple things coming up. And I think that without that context, the numbers get out to the community and you've almost got to read through all the lines to get to that. So I think it'd be helpful if we had a summary of what was the overview of, you know, what we were trying to achieve there. But Chief, obviously, this slide forty-sixty did a great job. You know, many times we've taken you long, years, something over time, making sure we understand it. I think it was, it's something that we've noticed about two plus equivalent heads, which matches your staffing shortfall. And, you know, I know on the fire authority, we ran into that same issue, and I know Lawrence is dealing with it now, which is, you know, the chief or just to hire up as fast as possible or as often, you know, experience that. And I think he's done a great job going through all the numbers. And just so the, so the community knows outside of this great, pretty PowerPoint, there's a lot of detailed financial information to get into a lot more of the details of this, which I know Lawrence has done. And I just wanted to thank the chief for all of the information. I would say the one thing that we don't highlight is in my closing comments, because one of the, probably one of the bigger reds outside of the fact that the, the first budget issue is our real significant dependency on Red Flex. And the pending legislation potentially affected is, you know, our community depends, you know, whether you like it or not, our community depends on, you know, four hundred thousand dollars plus of revenue from, you know, really un, you know, unresourced, except for the total evaluation, practice situation. And I would subscribe to that. I think our community has conditioned their behavior that most of the tickets probably end up being people outside of our community and they hate it. But, and, you know, we did get a lot of feedback on it, but I, I think that we got to really, every year, kind of look at this, at least this year, reassess how important this is, that we should be tracking that legislation to find out what's the potential impact would be. Because that would be a huge, you know, dome-in hole in the middle of our budget if something happens where they require, you know, the city to take those down or do something like that. And again, I'm not saying this is the best way of policing, but it's definitely one of the important tools in our toolbox. But Chief, I'm just curious, or Brett, or anybody, do we know about the legislation? Is this a risk that we need to worry about years ahead? Is it something we need to plan for?
Yeah, we, yes, we need to track it and plan for the potential and plan for, there is a provision in the proposed legislation that would allow the city to develop a plan. I mean, it's not a immediate killer of those cities that have a Red Flex program. So that was the good news that we found in the proposed legislation. But we definitely need to track it and keep it on the radar screen and, and plan for, you know, plan for worst case and also hope and plan for the best case as well. Do whatever we can to continue to keep the program intact and track the legislation at the same time.
So, but the, for the education, if I'm old, if the council would be possible, if weekly or as part of the finished D- minutes, that you could just give a little bit of a briefing overview of the specific legislative bills that are out there, where they're at, what they expect in outcome, would be just looking to educate ourselves past the point of maybe it's coming and becomes bad.
Yes, we can. And we've, we have put together summaries, so we'll just continue to put those summaries out there in our weekly and updates to the council.
And Troy, it's-
That's all I have. Thank you, Chief.
It's Matt Harper's bill. Where'd it go? EB eleven sixty. And it did, Troy, it is a succession plan where if it does pass, you don't have to rip your cameras out immediately, but it is a phase where they eventually will go away if this does pass.
Yeah, and Jason, you've done a little bit more research. Can you give additional update on?
I don't have the information, but I guess I understand that there's a grandpa approach where you already had the lights up and running as of a certain date, then you had a certain timeline put together, a plan that analyzed the impacts and effectiveness of the cameras to reduce traffic collisions. And then depending on the results of that, that study, then you could potentially keep them in place in perpetuity. So we could provide the council with some information on that.
But I don't, in reading it, it wasn't because we make a lot of money off of it. It was more of the preventative and the safety issues that we gain out of it. The dollars couldn't even be analyzed really.
Yeah, you have to demonstrate the safety.
Right. Exactly.
Thank you, Chief. Kathy?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go on to item three C. Any public comment? No? Not at this time? Okay. Three C, is that going to be Jason?
I'll kick it off, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
You really want to say something?
Just, no, just briefly, no, I don't really want to. The less I say, the better on it. So just, this is a summary and overview of administration and including city manager's office, city clerk, and administrative services. So we've provided a, just comparable to the police department overview that you just saw. It's an overview of those functions with the budget analysis and staffing analysis and answer questions that the council may have and take feedback. So Jason Alomar will give the presentation at this point.
As Brett mentioned, the overview will provide a review of the city manager's office, the city clerk's office, administrative services, and we've also included budgetary information for the city council as well. This is just an overview of the organizational structure. We have six full-time staff and four part-time staff in the administration function. We'll go into each of those departments and divisions later on. Obviously, administration, it's our responsibility to carry out the legislative and fiscal policies adopted and set forth by the city council. So here I've included a budget snapshot for the city council, which includes the fourteen, fifteen budgeted amounts, the fourteen, fifteen projected amounts, and then the preliminary budget for fifteen, sixteen. And we're really looking for direction from the city council. And in fact, on the next slide, I've provided some information on the budget detail for dues. And then as an attachment, I've also included a budget worksheet which outlines travel and training costs. I'll pause to see if there's any comments or direction, or we can come back to it at the end of the presentation.
Is this our only opportunity to respond on any of this at this point or as you're planning?
Direction, that would be helpful. But obviously, throughout the budgetary process, we have workshops scheduled for May, two workshops in May and one in June. So, but the earlier we can get your feedback, the more helpful it will be.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is definitely the earliest opportunity we've provided the detail. We're seeking direction on, especially on the dues and on the travel worksheets tonight, if possible. And we can continue to discuss it through the budget process as we move forward, but this is an opportune time to discuss it and get direction.
Now, as we talked about last year, and I, I'm not sure here on the, on the expense side of things, I still have concerns despite the fact that I was shot down by my colleagues on the Association of California Cities with a seven thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollar fee compared to League of Californias, which is about fifteen hundred dollars left, less. I guess the Lathco is a mandated cost. I'm not sure about the Orange County Council of Governments. I just think we need, and I see that the Human Relations Commission is no longer on that list, at least I'm assuming it's not.
Preliminary, we've removed that from the budget.
Okay. I'm just thinking, you know, while it's down two thousand dollars over the current budget and current projected, I really think like we really need to analyze that a little bit more. I know the Association of Orange County Cities, we talked about it the last meeting, has a number of sponsoring groups, lobbyists, other types of businesses that are dues-paying members that get a seat at the board and ostensibly offset some of the costs. The costs still don't get offset. I know one of the factors that was discussed was it's an opportunity for networking, yet our involvement with many of the other groups, including the Orange County League of Cities group, I believe that networking is just as good in those other areas. The city manager mentioned that there was two training programs that staff took advantage of. I know last year with being new council member Hasselbrink did take a couple of the early training classes, and I have no objections really with, with any of those kinds of things. I just think out of the total budget that we're looking at of non-personnel items of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-five, twenty grand is huge. And that's just strictly in dues of being involved. So I really feel like we need to talk about this a little bit more in depth. If the rest of you don't, I understand, but I just think that's a huge number. We've also increased the cost for travel and training by thirty-five hundred dollars. And I'm a little concerned because both Shelley and I signed up and took a position on a league policy committee, which does require traveling at least twice a year. The last session that they had was in Ontario, which wasn't a huge, huge issue. But a couple of them coming up are, and one of those meetings occurs prior to the annual conference, and the annual conference, I'm not sure where that is this year.
San Jose?
It's in San Jose. And typically, the mayor and the mayor pro tem are voting delegates. So I think as we look forward and moving that, and unfortunately, the committee that Shelley's on meets on Thursdays, mine meets on Friday, so we can't even double up in terms of transportation and try and save some expense that way. So I'm just, I'm apprehensive from this standpoint. I would rather the council weigh in on the value of us participating in those types of things where it does generate some travel expense. My session on Friday of last week was, was very helpful. And I plan to provide a report back on the different things that were discussed and the issues that were brought up, a lot of them dealing with legislation that's currently involved. But I would like the rest of you, including council member Edgar, to weigh in. As I said, I just think the, the amount of money on dues is huge.
Can I ask you, Brett, on the travel issue, isn't that supposed to be agendized soon?
Well, we have an item here tonight-
Yes.
-to discuss it. And it is, it can be a standalone, but we've incorporated it into the discussion tonight. It's a spreadsheet.
Right. I'm looking at it.
Okay.
But there's clearly no staff report that goes with it, anything like that. This is more of a-
Jason was going to give a, he was going to-
I just thought it might be helpful to get some feedback now, and we can include a separate item later on.
I actually like what you did. I'm just saying that Dean was saying, I'm trying to figure out-
As a standalone?
Well, I'm trying to figure out when we're best to discuss it. You know, is, is now the time, or are we going to bring up, is this going to get separate treatment? It seemed like when Mayor Mejia was leaving, we, we had this on the agenda, and then it got backed off. So is that still on the agenda?
We can. If the council wants us to put this as a standalone item on a future agenda, we definitely can put together staff.
Personally, I prefer just a, a more thorough staff report as to, you know, explain what these are. How do you guys see it?
Is the travel part or the, the association part?
Well, travel for right now is what I was discussing. Would you prefer, is this fine, or would you prefer more detail? Dean, what do you think?
Well-
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I was going to say, what the mayor was talking, last year's mayor was talking about was something comparable to what City of Cypress does. And City Cypress allows a monthly, a normal stipend, which is, which is allowed under state code, but they also provide a secondary stipend of three hundred dollars a month times the five council members. And that money, each council member applies to whatever they choose to apply it to. With, with each of us being solicited by nonprofits in the town, from Cypress Foundation, which is two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty dollars, to a couple of our other local nonprofits, which range from probably a low of sixty, I guess, on We Care all the way up to a couple hundred dollars on Casa. We don't need, each one of us need to be at each one of these to make representation on the part of the city. I don't know whether that's the right way. That was the thing that I think Mayor Mejia was trying to get at, was to see, there's no, there's no other costs. They can't submit mileage, they can't submit any other reimbursements. It has to come out of their monthly allotment. And, and they're on their own from the standpoint of how that allotment works. Doing it this way, it's identifying some of them that are there, but if for some reason something else came up, for example, the league meeting is not always in Northern California. Sometimes it's down here in Southern California. The CJPIA thing that I attended last year was in Santa Barbara and was drivable. This year, it's in San Francisco, and that's probably not drivable. So there will be variances each year based on involvement with these different organizations. And to me, it's just a healthy discussion from the standpoint of how the rest of the council wants to view what we do. You know, there's, there's, there's other things that will come up, whether it's something dealing with the county or, or some other type of dinner where somebody really feels like we need to attend. Putting it in this way almost becomes first come, first served. And then at the tail end of the year, if everything is gone, then, you know, there are exceptions. What do we do? The year that I was on council previously, I tried to get into the league on their board, and it required going to a, an interview that was held in Santa Clara. This year, their board required onsite interview as well. They weren't going to do anything over the phone. There are other cities that routinely go to Sacramento to lobby. And not necessarily with the League of Cities or with the Orange County ACC OC group, but if there's something specific going on that affects them, they're up there. There's a piece of legislation going through this year that reflects specifically Bahama. And they've sent their mayor and, I believe, a couple of their council members up there to lobby on their behalf regarding that. So I don't know how we want to, how we want to address it. Again, we're a small city. Again, we're a small city, we've got a limited budget. A lot of that stuff got cut back over the last six, eight years, so...
Mayor, you get a raise in the action, I'd like to make a couple comments.
Okay, we'll let you know. Go ahead.[619.24][619.24](Laughter). Microphone.
So there was a couple things that Mr. President was talking about. You know, I believe it sounded like we were going to try one more time to evaluate OC Council Government Association of California Cities, et cetera. And I would just say that the next agenda item that we're going to talk about is a reason why again, I just think it's super critical that we maintain a presence in those. And I'm, you know, I know that Dean and I don't agree on this right now, but I would say that I just, I'm even more, especially even after AB 355. But with that issue, I just wanted to put that out there, and I'm still super supportive of, this is our only chance to be representative of the city. And to me, it's not about networking, it's about trying to have an effective level playing field against some of these bigger cities and maintaining our voice and local, you know, decisions that affect our city. The second thing, though, that I would, I would put out as an idea or suggestion, that a little bit of the histrionics of the money that Dean has talked about or stipends that pertains to getting involved in community activities, is that I don't know if I would be as supportive about a stipend amount, because I think it's perceived by the community as a pay increase. But I think if you remember back when we switched our policy, we were having concerns in the community that the council was abusing some of the privileges of being in office, and they were going over and above and not participating and signing up for things and not attending. And, you know, maybe at this point, Dean, maybe what we should think about is reevaluating our policy, where it's not such a direct stipend approach, is they change the policy to allow for us to really be involved in our community to the extent that, you know, we have to. Because I don't know about you guys, and I'm not worried about the money part of it, but, you know, for the $400 or whatever we make a month, you know, I spend more, I spend much more than that a month going to events to support the city, and I'm glad I do, but, you know, people that are on the council should be able to go to do that, and it shouldn't be something that, you know, you have to have discretionary income over and above what you get paid to be on here to be a part of it. So I think that if you can change the policy, open that back up, and really put the responsibility back on the council members of whether they want to put the time in, and as long as we're not abusing the ability, and then as it comes to funding it, we just appropriate, you know, the correct amounts in the budgeting process for a just in case the money is spent, just like we do for the city manager, or the police chief, or fill in the blank. That way, you know, it gives the council members some discretion of how much they want to be involved, but there's no upside. If you just sit home for 12 months and don't go to anything, you don't get some stipend pay increase. But if you do go, you know, and you're really active in the community, you don't get, you know, you don't have to, you know, because, let's face it, over and above going to all the events, you know, we're also, you know, underwriting things and helping out. So it's not just the cost of the event that is there, you know, we really want to stay involved in the community, and I think it's important. So I would be supportive of what Dean is talking about on this issue specifically, with trying to find a way to, you know, to kind of reevaluate our policy. And I think maybe we had a very strong reaction 2008, and, you know, seven years have went by. So I don't know, I would just put that out for consideration.
Thank you, Brett.
Yeah, and I think the way I understood it, the previous mayor, Mejia, when she was here, and the item that she wanted to take forward that kind of got tabled as she left was to consider a change in the policy that would allow funding more events. So there are specific prohibitions in the travel policy right now that don't allow the city to pay for council members to attend charitable events, and that is what is a big impact. And if that, from a legal standpoint, if there's, we can, I mean, we'll obviously run it by the city attorney, but modification of policy may allow expansion of, you know, funding more events.
Okay, Warren?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Troy, I think what Dean was talking about, though, was not stipend directly to the council members, but I think in my understanding would be sort of an allowance. But regardless, I think it was an allowance that, I'll say, a budget we can direct. It would still require a change of the policy.
Yeah.
So with that said, I think perhaps what we can look at is, in the next budgeting cycle, I mean, we kind of know what we've supported, what we'd like to support, and maybe get some framework into, I would put the burden on Wendy because she kind of corrals us, but, you know, make some requests, and then see how it all racks and stacks as, you know, top to bottom, and then I think we can kind of decide how we want to do it, make the policy change to go along with it, and then appropriate the money as, you know, as we're able to, because we may not be able to appropriate when we're talking about, you know, cuts to whatever, you know, wherever we have to trim to fit inside the revenues. And we may have to sacrifice some things we'd like to do. So with that, Dean, I'd support it, but I think, you know, the mechanics of getting there is, I think, will be the detail, so...
I just wanted to add that the approach that I took, Wendy and I actually took, we looked at the events that had taken place in prior years, and then we also looked forward to the next year and tried to put together at least a starting point for a budget. And the budget worksheet actually amounts to, we've identified as $6,600 of activities, but we've built in a budget for $7,500. So it's not meant to be all-inclusive, but just a starting point for discussion purposes. And that's...
Maybe what you're missing are things that we've, you know, supported that were, you know, certainly out of our pocket and, you know, as part of our duties, right? So maybe that's the thing, we'd need to make that, you know, visible to you to rack and stack and see how it all kind of plays out. So that's what I would suggest we do, just get the inputs in, and we can project out a year's, you know, time, I think.
So you're basically ready to go with a staff report for the next meeting?
April 12, the next meeting is April 20, so it probably would be the first meeting in May, that we can bring it back. And that coincides with the first budget workshop, so we can dovetail it in. We can have a standalone staff report.
Early May.
Okay. We have to submit what we think we'd like to support.
Yeah, that'll give us time to work.
The council will contribute in the meantime.
Yeah, that'll give us time to work with you on that, too.
So early May. Okay. Troy? Early May, good with you?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And standalone on travel, and then do you want to discuss dues and memberships separately, standalone, discussed tonight, and those are all the options?
Personally, I thought the ACCOC was approved for a year and was going to be reviewed like next October, November, when the budget, they come up in December, correct?
Yes.
That we've already paid for this year, so we're going to, I think, see what kind of benefits we feel we're getting for those who voted for it, and see if we want to continue. Is that...
Okay. All right.
So bring back during the budget process?
Yeah, I mean, it, the rest of the dues combined are $12,000, and are somewhat self-explanatory. Do we want to go into dues at all besides that? So, okay, so we'll just, we'll have that calendar for October, and then we'll, please proceed.
Okay. So leave the budget as is, and then we'll revisit it when the dues become due?
Yeah.
And, you know, it's on your guys' radar, too, that it's a, it's a sensitive subject. So when dues are come due, even though it might be under certain limits, at least bring it up in the weekly or something.
Yeah, and we've also, we've put them on, made sure that they're on the regular warrant register in the event that the council wants to pull something and consider it, so that we don't release it until you've approved it at the regular meeting. For these dues, for these council-related dues.
There's six of them. Why don't I just put it on the consent calendar and break it out, you know, for, even though some of them are small, just so people are aware.
So they're all created equal.
So we question it every time. Okay?
All right. So now we're going to get into the city manager's office, and...
Is there a number under that picture?
So this is the budget for the city manager and city clerk. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things here. First of all, salaries, as you'll notice, is proposed to be down in '15, '16, and the reason for that is we've transferred two part-time receptionists, which amounts approximately $34,000 a year, to administrative services. Retirement costs are up $48,000, and that's due to the PERS costs that are going up. We actually have the actuary coming out next Monday, and it'll be a recap or revisit of the discussion that took place in February. There were some follow-up questions that we had later on that night, and so he'll be back to address those questions next week. The election expense, you'll notice, is $1,000, projected to be $1,000 next year. It's in between, you know, election years, and so there's some savings there. And then one of the new capital replacement charges is, you know, $1,000 budgeted for '15, '16.
Jason, just a quick question, why is there any election expense? I mean, I know $1,000 is negligible, but why is there any?
We do start prepping for the election before the election time, so towards the beginning of the fiscal year, we'll have some supplies that we have, need to purchase, our consulting fees, legal expenses.
Okay.
I won't read all the department goals, but just to have a list of the different goals that we have outlined. Part of the city manager's responsibilities include overseeing the cable commission, and these are the cable commissioners. I'll give a brief overview of the city clerk's office as well. As we discussed, she's responsible for administering the election process, but also managing city records. And this is just a list of some of her goals. Give a brief overcap of administrative services. So administrative services, we have three full-time staff and three part-time staff. We have two listed here. We also have a third which has been used in a part-time capacity. When my position was vacant, it was filled by two part-time retired annuitants, Glenn Steinbrink and Pam Parisian. We've continued to use Pam on an as-needed basis for about one to two days a month, and that's proven to be highly valuable. It's about .1 FDEs, so that making up the third part-time employee. Administrative services oversees financial administration, risk management, accounting services, and personnel. Just a recap of our budget. You'll notice the increase in costs on the salary side, and that is largely due to mentioning before the transferring of the two part-time receptionists that were really under the purview of my department, but because there wasn't a permanent director in that, in my department, they were under the city manager's responsibility and under his budget. You'll also notice the increase in PERS costs and the new capital replacement charges that have also been built into the budget as well. There's also approximately $25,000 budgeted for HDL, which is the outsourcing of the business license function, which was approved earlier this year, which is also offset with anticipated revenues and business license revenue.
Jason, with respect to transferring those two positions, which is a significant increase, both in part salary and in benefits, and especially retirement, I don't see the reduction comparable in the city manager's budget. In fact, I see about a $20,000 increase. How if those two positions came out of his budget, are we looking at an increase?
There's only $34,000 of costs being transferred from the two departments. Are you looking at the projected year-end number?
Slide eight and slide 15.
And on slide 15, what is adding maybe to the confusion? If you look at 14, 15, the middle column, which is the projected number, that includes salary savings associated with my position. I didn't come on board until mid-November, so there's some significant savings embedded into that, into that savings for the projected year-end total. So it's more comparable, I think, to compare the budgeted amount for salaries, the $286, $590, and compare that to the '15, '16 preliminary budget. And then when you do that, it's a little more...
Thirty thousand a saving shows up there.
Yeah.
The 34 and...
And then going back to slide eight?
We done?
Well, I'm not seeing a comparable decrease of the $30,000.
You know, because they said, remember, the retirement number's up $48,000. So it kills, it kills the total line. And in the salaries, you see it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the two part-timers, they really don't have much of, they're not eligible for PERS, so it's really just the 3.75% that we contribute on their behalf for retirement. Just a list of some of the goals that we have in my department. And my department also oversees the Personnel Appeals Commission, which has yet to meet, I think, in a couple of years, but I think we actually plan on meeting with them just to do kind of an overview of the responsibilities, and that's what I think. Just a list of accomplishments, kind of citywide, and wanted to also add that administrative services, the budget for administrative services is projected to be approximately $1.2 million, which is approximately 10% of the citywide budget. It also includes approximately a 10% increase year-over-year, roughly $130,000, $90,000 of which is an increase in the retirement costs, and $25,000, which I mentioned previously, relates to the outsourcing of business license, which is kind of a high, high-level overview. And that's pretty much it.
Is it a new tradition to include the mayor pro tem in a kind of...
The smile says it all. Can you see that, Troy?
The smile says it all.
If we're going to do it right, I think the outhouse was a big part of it. It should be included in there. Hey, I'm in there with you, so... Okay. Let me thank everybody at the table, actually, who did all the work. Gotten just a surprising amount of positive comments from people, like this is how long overdue, and I know it wasn't easy, and, but I think it was certainly worthwhile, you know, gave us and the community a snapshot of, like, the big picture, of, you know, what do we do and where do we spend our money? And I think that's really the number-one concern people have of what kind of job we're doing. So thank you all for an excellent job, and hopefully we can do it again in a few years, but maybe not next year. Okay. We're now going to go into closed session. Carrie?
Yes, the purposes of the closed session are, first of all, conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator, is Brett Hunley, city manager, regarding unrepresented employee, city clerk pursuant to government code section 5495-7.6. And secondly, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant disclosure of litigation pursuant to 5495-6.9b2 of the government code. And it says one potential case, but I don't think there's a problem with adding a second one, which came up, the need for it came up after the agenda was prepared, because we can't disclose the nature of it in public. But I would ask the council to vote on adding a second closed session for anticipated litigation.
I'll make that motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Troy, 5-0? Troy?
Oh, sorry, I was talking with Niva. Yes, please. Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.